Thank you. Good evening. I apologize for the lateness of our meeting. We ran into a little longer executive session than we had planned to. So, welcome this evening. Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Pastor?
Here.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Here.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Walter?
Here.
Mr. Adler?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here.
Thank you. Would you join me in a pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you. Next on the agenda is the recognition of retiring board member, Ms. M. Lynn Kostick. I've always wondered what the M. stand for. Is it Mary Lynn?
You know what. You know what. President Ross. You know. You know what.
Ms. Kostick.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you care to have a few words as an outgoing board member? She's got a few words.
I do have a few words. I definitely do. Good evening, everyone.
She does have a few words.
I do. I do. I have a few. No, just joking, that's okay, too. This moment is bittersweet. I've had the wonderful opportunity to have served the students, staff, and administration of Peoria Public Schools for almost seven years. I entered this race with the intent of just serving the term of Rachel Parker, however, found that in that short time, that there was much, much work to be done in order to get this district where it needed to be, and that was to be successful in all endeavors involving the students. And I decided to run for the seat that I had only intended to be in a short time. Many changes have occurred over the past several years. Decisions were made that place the Board of Education and Peoria Public Schools in an unfavorable light among some community members. However, the responsibility of this board is and always will be is to oversee, create, establish, and uphold the policies of the school district. There are so many responsibilities that are part of this position and title, and it's not easy. It's not an easy seat to occupy, and definitely it's not a thankless one, contrary to the belief of some. I took my role seriously, whether it included a change in leadership, the dismissal or retaining of a staff person or a student, recruitment efforts, closing of schools, reducing our financial debt, and the list goes on. Our commitment was what it took to be a member of this board. I was not the board member who felt that every time I occupied this seat and looked out onto the audience, felt I had a need to speak. I talk when the need to do so arises. It is not always necessary to speak just to have something to say in public session. I use my voice in the executive sessions where I have the opportunity to question and query, discuss, and ponder. I have never made a decision on any situation on the premise or pressure or persuasion. I am passionate about my beliefs and stand firm on them. I am not afraid to speak up or out, as those around this horseshoe can attest to. I have enjoyed these years. I leave imploring this board to stand by and with your leader, the leader of this district who is committed to the children who attend Peoria Public Schools, the families and the community. Do not become divided and far sighted of the premise in which you were elected. Do not lose sight of your oath and become contrite and cynical. Respect the leadership of this board. Always remember that this board is made of seven members to form one body known as Peoria Public School Board of Education. Always keep in the forefront the purpose in which you are occupying this seat. It's not about you. I believe in this leadership and am committed to her vision for Peoria Public Schools, whereas all children have an equal opportunity to receive an equal education, whether in preparation for college or preparation for the workforce. I share her beliefs. Now, just because I will no longer occupy a seat at this horseshoe, don't get it twisted. I will continue to be a voice for our children. My work is not complete. I will continue to work to ensure that children of this community have a solid grounded early education in preparation to enter into Peoria Public Schools. I am proud to have served on this board, and it's been a wonderful, fulfilling, sometimes challenging experience in which I would do again if I was younger. I wish each of you the best, and thank you. Kostick out.
Not quite. We still have some business. Mrs. Pastor, the Board of Education and the administration, we have a little gift for you. I'll just let you open it. But you're not done yet. We still have some business to take here. Are there any board members that would like to make comments? Mr. Shaw?
Mrs. Kostick, I want to thank you for your critical thinking, your patience, and your passion in executing your role on this board. And personally, I want to thank you for taking the time to help me get started when I joined this board. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you. Mr. Adler?
I will echo a similar sentiment. I very much appreciate and share a lot of the, I think, the characteristics that you mentioned in terms of knowing your time and place to speak. And actually, I personally hate my own voice in this microphone, so it kind of makes me hard to pull this off right now. But I very much appreciate the thoughtful manner in which you've conducted yourself in your service, as well as your willingness to stand up when your community needs you to be a leader and stand in for someone else. Thank you.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes. Mrs. Kostick, I want you to know that I have appreciated you. I've learned a lot from you as a person coming newly on this board. I want to thank you for what you're doing. But I guess I most really want to thank you for your passion for kids and what you want and would like our kids to do and succeed and be good citizens. And so, I just think that we need to keep you involved in things that this district does. You have a lot of knowledge that I think you can give out additional knowledge. And I just thank you for your patience. And you're right. You don't speak every time. But when you speak, people listen. So, we'll be sorry to see you go.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Wilder?
Mrs. Kostick, we didn't have that much chance to work together this year, but I really do respect. You had to make some tough decisions a couple of years ago, and I really admire your courage to do that. I think you did what you thought was in the best sense of this whole district. And because of that, I think we're moving forward, and I really appreciate your efforts on that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Pop?
I'm one of those ones that talks a lot. And so, you'll know how much this means. Thank you.
And I'll end by saying, end up the board comments by saying, it's been a really good working with you. The dialogue that you clarify. And I'm not, you're not gone away. You're just stepping off for a minute. So, you know, we'll always be talking to you about children because you have a passion for children. And you probably come back and teach us something, which maybe. Okay, so, thank you again. And with that, before I do audience presentation, I want to just make the audience aware that item number 12 will be postponed until a later time. We'll come back with a board approval at a later time. Item number 12 will be postponed from the agenda today. Okay? We need more time to talk about that. Okay? Now, we are at the common place on the agenda that provides an opportunity for members of the community who wish to address the board. As you know, we are volunteers elected by you to oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of a quality education for the students of Peoria District 150 schools. Board welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to this goal. Recognizing that we all have our First Amendment rights of free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the board's authority. There are some issues that we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have specific personal concerns that need to be addressed, we will have a staff person help you. In addition, board members are accessible outside of these meetings. Our phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, PSD150.org. We realize that five minutes may not be enough time for some of you to express your thoughts, so we have installed a comment box for your convenience. And our board secretary will be collecting those comments after each meeting and compiling and sharing with the board and superintendent. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each speaker has five minutes, and no one under age 18 may address the board unless accompanied by a parent or guardian or teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. Our first speaker is Mr. Terry Knapp.
Yes, I'd like to draw your attention to item number nine on the agenda, the boundary and demographic study. I would like to point out that this committee, again, is coming from, I guess, California and Texas. Are you serious? Haven't we learned our lesson by now that out of state doesn't mean expert? I mean, we have, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I would recommend Don Jackson, NOACP, and a few people on the board, Ernestine and Dan Walter and Mr. Ross and some other people beyond this committee, and not ship this out. I lived through this experience for the last 10 years with the experts from North Carolina. The 10 experts from North Carolina came in here and dismantled this district. We had to run them out. And thanks again, Ms. Kostick, for being brave enough to be part of that and taking a stand. But, you know, it's really sad that we don't learn from our past experience. It's really sad, you know, a couple superintendents ago, there was an assistant superintendent here by the name of Yvonne Payton, who was here for three years. I liked Yvonne. Nice person. She was from Michigan. Didn't even know after three years, there was a kind of meeting between the teachers' union, and she was an attendance, and she called me and wanted to know where Blaine Sumner's school was and how to get there. Are you serious? Three years. Michigan license plate on her car. You know, it boils down to Blaine Sumner not even knowing where it was after three years. We don't need people from California and Texas to come here and tell us how to redraw our boundaries. That's an insult to the people of Peoria. And I would say it again, you know, Mr. Ken sitting over here, I would love to see him on the committee. He knows what goes on in Peoria, and he's been around here forever. And people like that need to be part of this process, not people from California. I mean, I'm so sick of watching California in the national media. I can't stand it. The state of Illinois, the deadbeat state of Illinois. We're going to send more money to California and Texas, our taxpayer money, California and Texas. Haven't we learned from going and sending, haven't people, 200 teachers and spending $200,000 to Orlando, Florida? Wasting that money? We're still sending teachers to Minnesota. Why do we send them to Minnesota? Bring those people here. Spend our taxpayer dollars here. Our state is broke because we do things like this. We shouldn't send our money out of state, especially at this time in the history of the state of Illinois. Quest, another situation. You know, we give money to Quest. They go and hire a company from Cleveland, Concept Schools. We pay them money. They in turn send four years. They send people, students and parents and everybody else to Istanbul, Turkey. The crisis center of the world, we're sending people there and spending our taxpayer dollar of money, sending people to Turkey. Please. It's obscene. You need to understand, too, that in the future, you know, we've got to be more responsible with our funds and keeping them in Illinois. And I hope you take this seriously when we go through the Edison situation, where we sent $17 million to New York City. $17 million, separate from the schools here. We spent another $25 million on Edison schools here in 10 years. Sent $17 million of our taxpayer money to New York City. We could have recycled that money in Peoria and didn't do it. $17 million, a lot of money to recycle in Peoria instead of sending it to New York City. And then they fleeced us with their IPO. How much money was lost in Peoria by capital, people, and everybody else who invested in the IPO that went to $39 a share, was 17 cents, you know, six weeks later. It's crazy. Learn from your mistakes. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Is there any response to audience participation? Dr. Pop, you want to throw that software?
Thank you, Ms. Knapp. That boundary study, it's actually a software. So, Mr. C., why don't we explain to the audience? It's a nice opportunity. So, it is a software that we're purchasing, which will be part of our website. So, we have learned, and the Avid, I mean, the trips. We have, for example, the Avid. You're very familiar with Avid. We have to do some mandatory training as part of the relationship with this initiative for young people, to prepare them for college. And what we've done, we've downsized significantly. We're actually driving on a bus, and so, no one is flying. So, really, thank you about that. And Chris Copeland will give the audience and share with you more about the Davis Company.
Sure. So, this is really a follow-up to our school reconfiguration, grade level reconfiguration implementation for this past year. We waited for that implementation to be completed and began looking at several groups back in December. We looked at three companies. We started with one software company that Dunlap actually uses, looked at them, looked at Davis Demographics, and then looked at an individual. And so, the team that met with those vendors really looked at what the software could do and how we could bring that in-house. Davis Demographics is really doing a joint piece with us this first year, and then will be gradually turning that software over. But it takes the demographic information from the census, from housing and development from the city. It basically is a software that uses GIS mapping, and we're able to take a look and see where our students live over the past several academic years and where they've migrated to during that time to be able to say if we moved the boundary one block north, how would that impact that school's enrollment? So, really, it's a comprehensive piece that allows us to work with them this first year, and then we'll be able to take that, bring that software in-house following.
And you could literally simulate it by doing it online. And it's also talking with transportation. So, a transportation director is also intricately involved in this process.
And he asked the question of cost. It's, I believe, it's $20,000 for the first year with their help. I think it goes down to, it's again $20,000 because we buy the software license the second year, and then following that will be $2,500.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Can we ask Chris some questions about that?
Go ahead.
Chris, the one thing I would recommend to the Davis group is that they use larger font size because going through the 20-page agreement that was in there, there are some things that were hard to read. But one of the things, is it necessary to do a three-year agreement? This is first question. Second one, there wasn't anybody in Illinois that could do this kind of service?
So, second question first. We looked at, again, an individual here in Illinois that would help us do one look. But what the team really liked about the software is to be able to do that follow-up. So, that's why we're working with Davis jointly for the first year. They'll help us make recommendations to bring back to you hopefully in January. And we'll look at those for the following school year, and then for them to be able to come back and follow up and help us make any tweaks to those recommendations if the board approves those. And then again, still being able to use that software in-house as a follow-up in years afterwards. Back to your first question, the individual we looked at was in Illinois, but it was just a one-time study. And then we'd have to pay to do a study every year after that as well. So, it'd be paying for his, that person's time to do that year after year after year.
Conceptually, I think this is a great idea. I think there's a necessity to do this review. I guess my other question, part of that was that for the three-year, I believe it was $47,000?
Correct.
Around that area? It looked like there were some extra charges built in. And I'm not sure of that because I think it's $150 or $200 an hour for those things. And there was also a training component for our people. Where was that training going to be done? And was there an extra charge for that? Or was that inclusive within the?
So, that's inclusive within the price, but that training would be done. We can bring it here, but if we're just going to have one individual, and right now, we're looking at the Transportation Department to be the owners of the software. So, it would be cheaper if we're only going to send one person to training to send them to Dallas to do that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. That's the response to audience presentation. Consent agenda.
So, as Mrs. Ross mentioned, we are pulling item 12. So, there's 13 on your public agenda. I'll just read off the 12 that we're doing. So, the first item on the consent agenda is the Human Resources Report. Item number two is interim payments. Item number three is the Illinois School District Liquid Asset Fund. Item number four is a resolution authorizing inter-fund transfers and loans and authority to invest those funds as amended. Item number five is the tax deductions. Item number six is the resolution designating depositories. Item number seven is the Treasurer's Bond. Item number eight is prevailing wage. Item number nine is the Boundary and Demographics Study. Item 10 is the readoption of existing hazard boundaries. Item 11 is the Declaration of Surplus Property and the Authorized Disposition. And item number 13 is a pay increase for the superintendent of schools.
Are there any items that any board member would like to have for a separate vote?
Number nine, please.
Others. Seeing, I may have a motion for all items except nine.
So, move.
Second, Ms. Kostick. Okay, is there any discussion on any of those items? All right. Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Item number nine, may I have a motion?
I move that we adopt the Boundary and Demographics Study.
Second. We moved in second. Discussion. Dr. Pop?
Hi, yes. Thank you earlier. I thought it more appropriate to comment during the consentative rather than making comments. And so, the first thing is I want to reiterate what Mr. Walter said. I tried, the font is so small on the language, and I tried to make it larger and it pixelated. And so, there really are, I think, because I tried to read as much of it as I possibly could. And I purposely wore my glasses today, not just to hide the black eye my dog gave me the other week, but also, the only way I can, I can't even use, if I have my contacts and use my chingers on, I have to kind of get up close like this. And then the closer I get, it starts pixelating again. And so, it's going to be really difficult for me to make a decision on this because I can't read it. I mean, it's just a thing. The other part of it is what I could read, there were a couple of issues. One, proposal notes. And this is in two places. And so, I did see it in another place. It was a little larger, and thanks for that. That was still difficult. So, DDP's current compensation rate is $170 per hour for all services that are not a set fee. DDP retains the right to shift any fees between tasks in order to complete the overall scope of the proposal. Any additional services or, see, that looks like margins, but I think it's meanings. Specifically outlined in this proposal shall be involved on a time and materials basis at the current hourly rate. DDP's invoicing procedure typically requires, so, I think this says a 23% retainer, but I see someplace else where it says a 25% retainer. So, first, my concern is about not being able to read it. Second is the $170 an hour. I'm not clear on the contractual language of how that's going to affect us on top of what we're already paying for this. And so, I have concern there. The actual activities of this, oh, it, there was an original discussion. So, I have two dates on that. There's a date of January 26, 2017, and then one of June 25. Were there substantive changes between the two? And if there was one in January, did we have conversations with them in January? And if so, did I miss the memo? Let's see, what else? Oh, there is an option that they led, was for the software that has a big orange X in it. That is the software plus training for $17,420. Why is that Xed out? And what considerations made us X that out as opposed to spending the $47,000? Let me see, another question. Oh. As a result of this, if I understand it correctly, as a result of this, there could be some realignment in staffing. I'm correct. And if we're realigning and staffing and HR is involved, not the union to be, have at least input or be notified of this, is that, or is that going to, is there something that I don't understand about our relationship? That concern kind of came up to me because if we're going to start moving teachers around, which maybe we could do. Whatever. But I think that was a question that I had. Whatever, but I think that was a question that I had. There's a statement on confidentiality of personal information that says that confidentiality clause, and they state FERBA, et cetera, et cetera, so that's cool, that's right. And by the way, I'm mindful that this is, they say that they're the number one demographer, node-mapping company in the country, and I have no reason not to believe their claims. That, so I would imagine that they know what they're doing in this regard, but there's a statement that the confidentiality survives the length of the agreement. Okay? What happens after this? And I didn't see language to that extent, but again, it was hard for me to see language to that extent, and interprets in my language because, one, I'm not a attorney, and two, gosh, it was small to see. So I, those are, those concerns are enough to be quite significant for me. Oh, DDP makes no warranties for its services. Maybe that's just a standard line, neither of us does that. How much money are we going to save? That's the only, that's the last thing, is that if we're going to be spending X amount of dollars, when we, when we draw a budget later on, what are we giving back? So those are all the concerns I have, some of them pretty substantial, please.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. Chris, if you can help me out, please, but you're right, the font was really tiny, and I do have, they, they know I have, it's one of my pet peeves with, with tiny fonts.
Yeah, I apologize, I would, I wish I would have known that, because I, the originals fine, so I don't know if it was the way it was scanned in, or I didn't have any issues reading, so.
Yeah, and we do, we're long overdue for a boundary study, so it's a need that the district is in dire need of, and it was all part of that reconfiguration, that larger plan, and you've heard where areas are growing and others are, and so it's, long-term, it's looking for that equity and balance as it relates to enrollment. And then, Chris, there were some things about, go ahead and take it away.
Yeah, so what we're doing, and, and I think to several of your points, is providing them our, our data, our, our student data, to find out where our students are at and where they've been at. So they are getting our student addresses so that we can map those out, and in turn, it allows us to take a look at the data to see where our students live and what's, what's the most appropriate place to serve them. So this goes beyond just the boundary study. If, if we need to move programs for any reason in the future, we can take a look at the impact of that move before it happens. So if, for instance, we need to move a special ed program or an ELL program from one school to another school, or we want to take a look and say, do these students actually live closer to another school that would be closer for them to attend, we can do that and then make a recommendation based on that data. So this is, and to your question with the union, this is really to, to get the data tool that we can use to make those decisions, which of course, we would, we would make with, with the union and, and allow them to participate in that data review.
Any?
May I have a response?
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Kopp, I appreciate that. I think I heard you say when we move a specialized program or an ELL program, we'll have the data, and so now, what we have perhaps is an official way to move children, and I made my feelings known about moving children who might not have a voice, and I'm not saying that, I'm not accusing anybody or anything, but the first two things I heard was specialized in ELL, and again, this software might substantiate what we've heard in the past. It might not, but if the seventh and eighth grades, if Glenn, Glenn Oakley moved to Bonn Stuben, that was not seen as a reasonable way to look at the world, but this is the second time I've heard that it's okay to move ELL kids.
And Dr. Bob, don't forget, the board, the board will be involved with this process. We will make recommendations, and then we're compiling the data eventually, this, this is the whole idea, but then it will be presented to you, and so this is very embryonic, and there's no meat on it yet, and you will be fully immersed with, given us permission as a group to move on to the next level and the next level.
I understand that, but I hope you also understand my concerns, and I've heard this twice, and I've also heard any alternatives to, which I think are reasonable, as not being mentioned as forward as these others. And so, my observations come from the social justice viewpoint, as well as the pragmatics that might be associated with something like this.
I, I don't know, I haven't, I need to see the data. We have to see the information and then we'll present it to you, so.
I think those were just examples.
Yes, so we can't surmise.
Respectfully, let's just not get, man, ask respectfully.
Yeah, sure.
Instead of giving examples, let's just say, let's look at the data.
Yep.
Because what that says to me is that I already have in my mind what I'm going to do with this. And you may not, I'm not accusing you of that, but when I hear it said forward again, I think a reasonable person could kind of see.
Yep.
And so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anything else on number nine?
Ms. Jackson?
Ms. Jackson?
This dat, data will allow us to see where kids are.
Yes, ma'am.
Where they're going to be going to school, and it should allow us to look at the buildings that those kids are in to understand how many kids are in there, whether one school has, is it 400 per student class grade of children, and whether a building only has 200 and something in it.
Right.
And we got to do something.
And project, projections also.
Right, so that we as a board can under.
Incomings trends.
Can get the information to see where our kids are, what buildings we may, that are being utilized, and how to utilize those buildings, or those buildings that we may or may not, because if you've got 100 and some kids in a school, that's not, I'm sure you don't have that, but if that's the case, it gives us an idea, how do we work with this building, and how do we work with the building that has more kids in it than it should? That, the data will be getting, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, and we will keep the board intimately involved with the process every step of the way.
And, and I guess my, my last thing, and you know, this is one of my pet peeves, is this a sole-source support? This is the only company you can use?
He said they interview three companies.
To get the information? It is not?
No.
It is not sole-source?
They went.
We talked to.
Three of the companies.
Three or four of the companies, he said.
Oh, I didn't hear that, so.
And we have been working with them, we have been, within a due diligence and conversations.
None of, all those companies were outside of our area, Illinois?
One, but he only, they were only able to do one step, one project, and we needed.
I, I asked that because, you know, when I first came on the board, the one thing I've said, I wanted to make sure it happens, is that we utilize companies within Peoria area or Illinois rather than going outside and letting contracts, and that was a one that I'm going to be a stickler on as it relates to sole-source. But I like that idea, but I still think that if it's something that we can get within the state of Illinois and get all the parts of it, then I would be saying no.
We, we did that, and this one is much more comprehensive. You get a lot more for your money than the others.
Good.
May I have, if there are no other comments or suggestions on that item, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson-Aviles?
No.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay.
Any presentations or suggestions by board members? See? Yes, sir?
I had debated the idea of pulling number 13 on the pay increase for the Superintendent of Schools, decided not to do that, but I wanted to make a comment. Peoria Public Schools is the fourth-largest employer in the city of Peoria. We have several thousand employees. The way we did this process, my objection is not to the 5% increases proposed to Superintendent. I think she's done a remarkable job. I just don't think we did a very short shrift job on doing an evaluation for a person who I think's done a really good job here. I think the evaluation should have been done first. We got on Friday a recommendation for a salary increase for somebody before we had even discussed the merits of her. There may have been people within this board that thought that she was worth 1%, there may have been people here that thought she was worth 10. I just want to object, I think this was not done professionally, I don't think this was handled with the kind of profession that we need for a district this size. I'd have preferred, and it's a process that I'm complaining about, it's the process, it's not the person, and I think that's important. We're too good to settle for this, and that's, it was just my comment on this, I just am really concerned about how we did this. That's it.
All right. But just so the public knows that the process started June 6, when everyone had an opportunity to submit their opinions and their evaluations of the superintendent, and this is June 30, so we, we've had almost a whole month to submit anything that we'd like to submit and talk to Superintendent. So we'll look at that next year, since it's already been voted on. Okay? Any other presentations? Yes, sir?
I would like to read to you in public something about something else that I said in public. When I am wrong, I say I'm wrong. I wrote an email, and I have permission to, to read it to you now. It was to Dave Myers. Dear Dave, please accept my apology for my fire marshal plumber comment at the board meeting last Monday. My words were flip and dismissive, and I was disrespectful to you and your expertise. I am truly sorry, and please be assured that I will be more measured and respectful in the future. I very much appreciate the hard work you and your professional colleagues do for our district, schools, teachers, and students. You have a difficult job, and I intend to highlight your remarkable efforts every chance I get. Also, since I made my comments publicly, I will apologize publicly at our next board meeting.
Thank you, sir. Reports on board committees. Any board committees have any reports? Probably not at this time. Okay. Dr. Karat, I believe you have an introduction you'd like to make.
Yes, thank you, President Ross. You've just approved the principal for Whittier Primary School, and I would like, I'd like to ask her to come to the stage, and while she's working, coming towards the stage, her name is Ms. Julie Dagnan. She has been teaching for 15 years at the K4 primary level. She has rural, suburban, and urban experience. She has been a principal, so she's been a teacher for 15 years, a principal for nine years, and what I really, really like about her, she's an instructional leader, and she's an exceptionally hard worker. Congratulations and welcome to Peoria, and I'd like to turn the microphone over to you to make a few remarks, please.
Thank you, Dr. Karat and the board. I really appreciate this opportunity. I feel honored to become a part of the Whittier community and Peoria Public Schools. I will give you 3,000% and, for these students. So my passion is our families and our students, and I will show you that day after day. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, so, but I would like to thank another valuable member that has been a valuable member of our team, Mr. Rick Redbird. Today is his last day, and we have, we have a, would you pass that around? We have a small token for our.
I'll even stand up and give it to you.
I told him we would miss his, I, Mrs. Trum's smile.
Anyone have any comments to say to Mr. Redbird? I'll start by saying, I gave you a hard time, but that was on purpose. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Redbird, it has been my pleasure to work with you on the Policy Committee, and I wish you all the best in retirement for you and your family.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Redbird, I have appreciated working with you. I, I also wish you an enjoyable retirement, and I will not look forward to you ever giving an expo report ever again.
Who you want to?
Mr. Redbird.
No, don't call it, I misspelled, pronounced his name once, and you got a lot.
That's just the bane of my life.
Redbird.
Who?
Redbird.
Who?
That's right.
Redbird.
Right.
Always been Mr. Redbird, so why, why would I stop now? You know? Okay.
I answer to all forms of minutes.
Thank you, thank you. It's, you know, man, I gave you a hard time. But I, you know, I enjoyed, I enjoyed working with you and, and learned a lot, I learned a lot. Thank you for your patience, thank you for your diligence, and you have a wonderful retirement.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Redbird. I appreciate you, there were times that I know you looked at me and say, she didn't have a law degree, why is she saying those things? And it sounded like my husband saying, Ernestine, you're not a lawyer. But since I've worked around lawyers all of my life.
Well, you lived with one.
And I lived with one. I, I do things and I forget, but thank you for all you do. Thank you for working with us on the Care and Advisory Committee. When it got kind of hectic and rough, and we didn't know where we were going, you kept your cool, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Walter?
Well, my sidekick here at the roundtable, I have enjoyed working with you, and we haven't always agreed, but we've agreed to disagree, I think, in gentlemanly fashion, and I think you've given a lot of good advice to this board. And I think one of the things that a lot of the board members may not know or appreciate is that your background in insurance and liability probably saved us close to what your salary has been, and I just wanted to acknowledge that at this point in time, because you did, you did a lot that a lot of people, there's some nuances that a lot of people don't know about, because there's specialties in all kinds of law, and having looked at some of the things that you did, I realized that you have saved us a lot of money in doing that, and I just wanted to thank you publicly for doing that.
Well, I was saying.
No, I was scratching my head.
I thought everybody had, go ahead.
Sold.
Wish you well. I do not fondly recall our conversations from time to time, and others I do. Most recently, I don't think I've had a conversation, perhaps that one like that, since Father Riley caught me messing around instead of getting ready for a funeral we were supposed to serve, and he gave me the same sage advice that you have given me, perhaps probably a little bit more forcefully. That being said, you're honest, you're forthright, you're transparent, you say it like it is, and nobody can ask any more than that. I'm going to miss that. Thanks.
Thank you. Can I have about 30 minutes for rebuttal? No, I, thank you all, it, it has been an honor and a privilege to be a part of, of working with this board and, and working in this district. Peoria holds a special place in my heart, as I said, my father was born here, and a few weeks ago, my wife and I went out to Springdale Cemetery, and we looked up all of my relatives, and it was, it was, it was quite a fun day, but the, the challenges that you face in this district are many.
But the, the challenges that you face in this district are many, and, and, and the money is, is lean. And so that, that's going to lead to pressures. And one thing that, that sometimes happens in that kind of an environment is that rather than really hunkering down and pulling together, people start turning on each other. And I hope that you can resist that temptation. It's important for this board to, to work together and to, to get to know one another. And, and I guess I've earned the right to say that because I've, I've, I've served in, in public education at the board level for twenty years, seventeen of those were as a board member and as a board president. So I think that the process that you go through is, is wonderful. You've, you've had some really great discussions and around this board table. And I, you know, I think people tend to shy away from those kinds of things, but I really encourage you to have those discussions. And as Dr. Karat's always saying, don't take, don't take things personally. And she, she's preached that lesson a lot, and I've learned, I've learned that from you as well. So good luck to you all. I will be watching from afar, but I am hopeful for your success.
So now if we call on you, is by the hour now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So with that, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn, sign, die.
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to call the meeting to order for the reorganization meeting, June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. And just so you know, the board usually has a reorganization meeting on July first, but because of so many travel, travels, we brought it back a day to, to June thirtieth. So our normal time is July first, normally at noon on July first. So we'd like to elect a chairman pro tem.
President Ross, I move that we elect you, President Ross, as chairman pro tem.
Second.
Would you please call the roll?
Is Mrs. Kostic still there, here, or no?
Not yet.
This is on six. This, okay.
Problem.
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Dr. Davidson Aviles.
Aye.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Six ayes.
Thank you. The recognition of elected board members, Mr. Doug Shaw and Mr. Gregory Wilson. Mr. Wilson, would you please come to front and center and join us at the horseshoe while Ms. Kostic will.
Oh, no, I'm not that happy. I have everything. Thank you very much.
You can give her a name tag.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah? Oh, your name tag. That's right.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Wilson, would you join us? And this would be your.
Here, I'll get it. No, it's not right.
Here he is. No, I had it in there right.
Wow.
All right. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Gregory Wilson, representing District Two, and Mr. Doug Shaw, representing District Two. And with that, remark, remarks by new board members. We have to do the oath of office.
Take the oath.
Would you, you have your paperwork to do your oath of office?
You have it.
I have them. I thought you gave them to. They're copies as well. Okay. Give me all these papers. In a minute. And I just saw them just a few minutes ago, but I thought they were my copies, so I stuck them back. It's okay. I think I have. Yes. Oh, under everything. Then who wants to start? Mr. Shaw?
All right. Thank you. I, Doug Shaw, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully, faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Peoria Public Schools in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I will, I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school's, school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that, that as a board, that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. And I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
Thank you. Mr. Gregory Wilson?
Yes, I, Gregory Wilson, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Peoria Public Schools in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear or affirm that I shall respect taxpayer interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at, at a public board meeting. And I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
Thank you. Do either of you have any comments?
I, I do.
Remarks by new board members? You have any remarks?
I have a couple. Just, first of all, welcome, Mr. Wilson. I am looking forward to working with you along with the rest of the board. I'd like to thank the second district for giving me a full term, a full five-year term. Looking forward to continuing our mission to provide best education for, education for our Peoria families.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
Okay.
First thing I'd like to say is thank you to Ms. Kostic for, for the time that she sat in this seat and all that she's done. I think someone said it here. I've only had the chance to actually meet her like three or four times now, but she doesn't say much, but when she talks, it's, it's definitely, you know, it can be definitely heard. So I'd like to thank Mr. Redbird as well for, for your service as well. I thought I was going to be nervous. I'm not too nervous. I credit that to my passion of really being passionate about our children, people in general. So I would definitely use this, 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 this forum to work very close with the, with the members of the board here and the superintendent to, to do everything in our power to, to make sure all students get the education they deserve, as well as, you know, help with the community as well. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you. All right. Election of secretary.
I move that we elect Daphne Dixon as board secretary.
Second.
You can call the roll, even though you haven't been elected yet.
Mr. Walter.
Aye. Yes.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Dr. Davidson Aviles.
Oh, heck, yes.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carrying.
Okay, election of officers.
I conduct the roll call of the new board.
Oh, okay. Election, I just called, oh, we just called the roll. Okay, call the roll, the new board. I'm following my directions here.
Mr. Walter.
Aye. Here, present, oh.
Mrs. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Dr. Davidson Aviles.
Here.
Mr. Adler.
Here.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carrying.
Okay, election of officers. Ms. Dixon, do you have the nominating forms for officers?
Nominate.
Yeah, the nominating forms that we, we sent out, and those came in. So we, we can just have nominations in from the floor. Nominations for president from the floor.
I nominate Dan Walter.
Mrs. Madam President, I nominate Martha Ross, president.
Any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed. So since we have two people, when you call the roll, you will say the person's name that you are voting for.
Yes. Mr. Walter. I'm calling for Mr. Walter right now. Mr. Walter.
Mr. Walter. That's who I'm voting for.
No, so you say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, you want to say aye for yourself.
Well, when you call everybody's name, just call people's name, and they'll give the person's name that they vote for.
Oh, do you give?
Yes, just call everybody's name.
That's my understanding.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't get that. So, Mr. Walter.
For Mr. Walter.
Okay. Mrs. Jackson.
Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Ross.
Mrs. Ross.
Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Adler.
Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Shaw.
Mrs. Ross.
Dr. Davidson Aviles.
Mr. Walter.
Okay. Thank you. It looks like Ross had it, and you were supposed to say that. Okay. Vice President.
Madam President, I nominate Mr. Dan Adler.
Other nominations from the floor? Mr. Walter?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Davidson Aviles, Dr. Baugh.
All right, thank you. And would you follow the same, any other nominations from the floor? Would you follow the same procedure for vice president, please?
Yes. Mr. Dan Adler.
No, I'm.
Oh, Mr. Walter. Okay, I got him, okay.
It's the other Dan. Davidson Aviles.
There's your name, okay. Mrs. Jackson.
Mr. Adler.
Mr. Wilson.
I'm Mr. Adler.
Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Adler.
Mr. Adler.
Mr. Adler.
Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Adler.
Dr. Baugh.
I mean, Dr. Davidson Aviles.
Okay, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Adler is now, I have the majority of the votes for vice president. With that, yeah, we need the appointment of Assistant Secretary and Treasurer for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year. The proposed action is that Tracy A. Jones be appointed Assistant Secretary of the Board of Education, and that Mr. Mick Willis be appointed the Treasurer for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year. We have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, would you, is there any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Dr. Davidson Aviles.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carrying.
Thank you. Adoption of board agreement on the focus of work of the board and the code of conduct. Did everybody receive that in the mail, in your email? Board agreement and your code of conduct. This is something we do every year, code of conduct. Yes, sir.
On the Peoria Public Schools District Board agreements.
Let's, let's do a motion and a second before a question, okay?
I thought that's.
Motion. Motion to.
This proposed action stated in the agenda.
Okay.
To approve?
To approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, now, comments and questions, discussion.
The agreements, if we could look to page three, Board Superintendent Relationship Agreements. Number three, it says, "We agree to the following. The board itself has only two employees, the superintendent and the board secretary." I cannot support that because, quite frankly, it goes opposed to our own board policy that the board is responsible for hiring the superintendent and other employees. So I can't sign this agreement because I disagree with that piece of.
We have two, two direct employees.
Your statement says that. I don't agree with that, so I'm saying.
Okay, that's fine.
That's what, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, other.
Board of Education Policy two, colon, two, zero, point two, powers and duties of Board of Education, I believe this is what Mr. Walters is looking to, employing a superintendent and other personnel, making appointment decisions, including determining all compensation, dismissing personnel, and reclassification of all employees. Language suggests responsibilities more expansive than is noted in the Board Superintendent Relationship Agreements. I would also note that it is possible that if a board member were to vote for this, they in the policy I just read, which brings in a third policy that there are, that if a board member willingly aggregates their responsibilities, which could be interpreted in this fashion, in the way that I stated, that that serves as reason for removal. So if I understand the policies and how they're applied correctly, by signing to agree to this, you could be putting yourself in jeopardy of willfully aggregating your responsibilities. If I read the policies I stated to you, and if I read the other policy correctly, I would wonder if I could have some opinion on this.
Well, I think Mrs. Ross's statement is correct. If the superintendent is the, and the board secretary are the only direct employees of the board, the only, the only employees that the board gives, you know, direction to, as a whole, as, as an entity, seven of you speaking with one voice to, to those employees. In terms of the day-to-day supervision of the, of the, the other employees in the district, those are all supervised, the hiring process is supervised by the superintendent. She makes the recommendations. There's a financial transaction involved, which is the payment of the salary and benefits and that sort of thing, so that you, you obviously do have that control. And, and then having that control means you can say yes, or you can say no on, on all or some of those things. So, but at least I think what, what this goes to, and this is kind of standard, you know, school or association stuff, which is that, you know, in terms of giving direction, board members do not give direction to employees other than the superintendent. And, and you, your, your function is to evaluate the superintendent for the people she hires and the things she do, and, and the buck stops there. And that's, that's, I think it would, it would be appropriate to, to insert the word direct in that, or direct, direct supervision in that, in that statement. But that's, that's generally, that's the way it works.
I would agree with the addition of direct.
Mr. Adler, did you have something? Mr. Adler, did you have something or did you explain?
I was just gonna ask if we could offer that as a friendly amendment to the, the, uh, the board agreements, the direct. I, I was also gonna ask Mr. Redberg if there's, um, if your sense of, of this standard, you know, School Board, uh, type of agreement, this is the spirit of a working relationship, do you see any major concerns about, um, us conflicting with our own policies in signing off on it?
I, I, I do not. Uh, I think that, I think it is consistent with, uh, with policies and with the, with the relationship of the, the Board and the Superintendent. The Board's focus is on the Superintendent.
I mean, all the training that we've ever been through says the same thing.
Well, I will, just, if I can speak to answer to that. The last training I was at, by the way, which was conducted by some fairly minimal law firm, Stanley Eisenhammer and son, they were the ones that did that at the School Board Association meeting, always that I asked specifically that question, and their answer was, "The Superintendent recommends, the Board hires, not just the Superintendent, but we, we do hire."
Legally, that's true.
Legally, you recommend, Superintendent recommends, we hire. This basically says, "The only person we hire is you", and that's not actually the fact, and that's why I brought this up.
That's not exactly what it says, but, but we can put the "direct" in here, that, if that would make it clear, make it more clear.
So, Mrs. Ross, the, uh, the training that went on at the pier on the second day on Saturday, uh, they gave us a book and the whole day was spent, uh, identifying the role of the Board. And, um, uh, the role of the Board is to supervise, uh, this, the, uh, Superintendent and Board Secretaries. There are other Boards that have other members in that, such as, that, as the, if the Board decides they wanna hire someone to do something on the Board, they can do that. But the, 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 um, gist of that training was to say, "The Board has no jurisdiction over employees." In fact, it was interesting, they gave a, an analogy of the Board is being in the balcony and the employees being on the floor, and they call it the dance floor. And the only one that moves from the dance floor to the, to the balcony is a Superintendent. So, basically what they were saying to us, what they said to us, is that we don't have jurisdiction over the Superintendent's cabinet and the other employees. Those are supervised by supervisors, managers, and that kind of thing. So, it, and it's, it's really very clear in, in the, the information that gave us.
This, this kind of thing comes about because, uh, there have been, there have been many examples in the past where, uh, individual Board members not understanding their function will go into a school, uh, and start ordering the employees around, and, uh, and that's not their function. Again, the only time that you have any, any corporate power is when you're seated at the table here as, as seven, and, and all of that gets reduced to the, the, the decision on your votes. And, uh, so, that, that's why that's in here and, you know.
Yeah, we can offer that friendly amendment, uh, if it would make it clearer, but we as Board members can't, uh, or don't have the, the authority to hire a person, go out and interview and hire a person directly. We have to take the recommendation or not take the recommendation of the Superintendent. So, is that, is that pretty clear to everyone? Okay, so...
Mayor, Mayor Spock? Thank you for that clarification. Um, I, I will admit, I'm, I'm still scratching my head about it because it, it, and, and I, I think I understand really clearly, Mrs. Ross, the comment that you just made. And so, uh, it's just, the things, they just look different. If I may ask, uh, um, for reading of the amend, of the amended language, please?
Sure. And I did speak with, uh, the Illinois Association of School Boards about this. You have the...
As did I.
Do you have the, uh, the reading of the, of this particular amendment? I'm looking at, the Board itself has only two direct employees. I just, I inserted the word "direct", the Superintendent and Board Secretary.
I understood it to be something different, but...
What did you understand it to be?
I don't, I don't have a copy of the document.
That the Board would direct the Superintendent, not that it was a verb.
The, I, I think what we're talking about is that the Board itself has only two direct employees.
Direct employees.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you make that change? And can we, um, did we do the, uh, the motion? And we need another motion now, too.
I think it's, uh, we moved in...
Amendment as amended.
As amended.
Okay. So, we just have to add "as amended"?
Yes.
All right. Would you call the roll?
Are, are we also voting on the Peoria Public Schools Code of Conduct?
Yes, we are.
Yes. Okay.
Is there any comment on that? It's the same code of conduct that we've had every... Yeah, every year.
Just a...
And that goes on the wall over there?
A point of clarification, um, item, if I may?
Sure.
We should minimize surprises at board meetings. Administration, administration should be apprised of concerns of Board members prior to the board meetings so that administration can respond in a more informed manner. Likewise, administration should not surprise the Board and will endeavor to provide information presented at the meeting to the Board in advance of the board meeting. Uh, and again, I think it's, it's just, for me, it's a matter of pragmatics. I don't have a problem with the statement because it stands, uh, I, I, but it's a matter of degree and I, I want to know, um, I wanna know what a "prize" means and, and that we're differentiating that from, um, as Mr. Redberg alluded to earlier, um, uh, honest discussion that may disagree. So, for example, if a Board member has concerns, what, my concerns about the Davis Company, should I have, or does this direct me to, let me put it another way, does this direct me to call the parties involved, although in which case I would have been, would have signed that memo? Should I have called and talked to them ahead of time? Or is that what that directs me to?
You need clarification on anything you're saying?
On a prize, well, so I'm, I want clarification of being a prize, of a prizing administration prior to the board meeting.
Dr. Karat, that would be the person.
Well, well, it depends on, on, on how Dr. Karat wants to control that. I mean, and it's not, different Superintendents handle that differently. Some Superintendents, uh, allow Board members to contact individual staff members and other, others do not. But, but what, what this directs Board members to do, uh, is to, if, if you're going to have questions about something, to, to extend the courtesy to the staff to let them know that those questions are coming, what they're gonna be, so the staff can be prepared. It's just so, and, and the idea is, we don't, we don't, you know, the Board doesn't, doesn't embarrass the staff, or doesn't try to make the staff look foolish. And, and, and it's more productive because they come with, with the information, so they're not standing there saying, "I don't have that with me."
You may have meetings, during meetings.
During meetings, correct.
Right, but if there is, uh, I mean, if you need clarification on, on anything...
Oh, of, of, yeah, of course.
So, in, in other words, this directs me, this says it's okay for me to call somebody other than the Superintendent?
Well, it's really up to the Superintendent. She may want you to call her and, uh, and she may, uh, she may have a staff member call you back, um, you know, it, it, it's up to her.
It's not a nuance, it's very important for me, Dr. Dumas, what is your preference? And shall I interpret a praise as administration is, "I need to call you first"?
Yes.
Okay, so, that's clear. That actually kinda takes, um, two other things, and I'm not trying to be, instruction is here, I'm, it's just stuff goes through my head and maybe it's just 'cause I'm an academic, um, uh, but what if I have a question laid? What if I look at it and then I say, "Okay, that's fine", and then you know how it is, you sleep on something, you know, you, you kinda go through it over your head, or heck, you see a show on the news and, and then something else. And so, I get an idea that might sound like...
It's okay, text me, call me, that's okay, you have my permission.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that what if I don't? And, but because it's something that came up to me literally on the drive out here.
You know, it's not like somebody can, it's not like, it's not like court where somebody can object and say, "Well, you didn't call that, you don't call that question in", I mean, that's, that's certainly a reasonable...
That's, no, no, I'm, I'm just trying to be reasonable. And, and, um, no more. Now, that's it.
I guess the question was, if I would accept that as a friendly amendment?
There we go, the amendment.
We didn't.
Okay, any other questions on the code of conduct? Or the board agreement? Now, what we'll do is, that's gonna be coming around for Board members to sign, and then the, um, change, uh, that will go into the board agreement is not on the page that you signed, so Daphne will cha, make that change and, and make sure that we have that on file as it comes around. Okay.
So, we're gonna vote this one in, right? And then sign it?
Yes. May I have a vote, please? We've already had a, uh, sec, uh, first and second.
What do we do?
Call the roll, please.
Call the roll. Mr. Walter.
No.
Mrs. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Dr. Davidson Aviles.
Yes.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay, motion carried.
Okay, next on the agenda is the, uh, adoption of board policies. And these policies, uh, that the policies of the immediate past Board be the policies of the new Board. These are the board policies that we've always operated under, that Mr. Redberg and, and Mr. Shaw and Ms., uh, Ms. Kostick were chairing those subcommittees that work with the, with all the policies of the district. So, may I have a motion and a second for adoption of board policies?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on board policies?
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Dr. Davidson Aviles.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
The establishment of time and place for regular meetings. Uh, the City of Peoria School Board of Education, uh, School District adopts the attached schedule. Did everyone get that in their attached, your attached, uh, schedule? For its regular board meetings for the year 2017-18 school year. Unless otherwise posted in accordance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act, all meetings will take place beginning at 6:30 PM at the DLC Building, which is where we are now, at the District Administration Building, 3202 North Wisconsin Avenue, Peoria, Illinois. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do you call the roll, please?
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Dr. Davidson Aviles.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, presentation to my audience. An individual may address the Board at this time, no more than five minutes. With further time allotted, be, uh, may be appropriate with the discretion, at the discretion of the Chair and the concurrence of the majority of the Board. Is there anyone? We don't have any cards. Anyone wishing to...
I can hear it.
Anyone, we, we didn't get any cards from anyone that wished to address the Board at this particular session. Was that a confusion that you were supposed to have another card?
No, I don't, I don't have any.
You don't have anything?
Well, it was confusing that you had to have two cards.
Well, we had your card. Would you like to speak?
No.
Okay, thank you. So, with no, with nothing from the audience, there's no response to audience participation? Presentation and suggestions by Board members? We have, uh, any additional presentations or suggestions by Board members? You look like you wanna speak?
No. It's like Mr. Adler's assistant made it.
Reports from Board committees, we don't, we haven't had any new committees, so may I have a motion to adjourn?
I, I'm gonna hold up for one second. Um, uh, committee assignments, are we gonna do that next meeting or?
Next meeting.
Okay, awesome. I move that we adjourn.
Thank you.